Program materials, people and equipment and stuff. We tell any group in the past and would be currently, but we're not in this business anymore, would say, "Go out and raise other money." The group and it's in there, in the PAC, in the RCA, they do go to other people to get it for their kind of operation stuff. But this is all about just marketing dollars.
Counselor Esson, Counselor Johnson.
I think what you said was a pretty good way of putting it. As we look up on our wall where the city of Newburgh, the city of the chameleas, where if, this would be a big guiding star for what I think this group is supposed to do, and that's advertise Newburgh. And this is probably the best thing I've seen as far as giving the city an identity and championing something that we hope becomes a symbol of Newburgh. So that's why I like a lot what you said. And I basically, what you're also saying is this is going to be a one-time thing, the money came back, and it's there and we can use it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Uh, City Manager, City Manager, good evening. Did you, before putting this together, look at the previous applications that had been denied, TLT grants?
I was around when there was discussion, but...
No?
No. I mean, no. I didn't go back. I remember some of the discussions, like Old Fashioned Festival was one.
And then my second follow-up question would be, if I may, Mr. Mayor. How soon does the chameleon festival need this money? Is this a, "We need it tomorrow" kind of thing, or is this a, something that can hold off?
Well, I don't know what "hold off" means, but it's, and I think they're, they've requested to talk so they can answer it better. But it's a spring program, so...
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKinney?
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, Joe. Brian Stewart's relationship with the chameleon and this council pre-exist anything that TLT brought to the table or others. Brian Stewart is one of the reasons why we have a chameleon in the city of Newburgh. My personal feelings are is that the support of the chameleon festival ought to be something standard and built-in to the Newburgh budget because it's something unique. In all of the proposals that have ever come to us before, nothing represents the city of Newburgh more than the chameleon festival and our own chameleon. And it has a longevity of receiving our support for a long period of time here. So I'm going to, I was glad to hear your report. There's been a lot of things that come to us from time to time, but I would say there are not very many things that come to us that deserve as much support as the chameleon festival. And so with that and our personal support of Brian and others in the room here today, what a magnificent step forward. And I'll say this, chameleon festival brings people from around the world to the city of Newburgh.
If City Manager would step aside, we have three people that would like to talk to us about this particular request. And I'm going to call on a Carissa Bartlett, is that get Burkett? Okay, I did it right the second time. And thank you for your patience.
Now, Carissa Burkett, I have the great honor of being the Public Programming and Arts Manager at the Shalem Cultural Center. I'm also co-chair of the chameleon festival with Brian Stewart. I've been working at the cultural center for one year, so I've only had the opportunity to work on the festival for this past year, so one year under my belt, opposed to the 10 years that Brian has. But in that time, we received $8,000 last year from the TLT marketing, and we were able to increase our attendance by 1,000 due to the marketing efforts. We were able to increase also the percentage of people from outside of Newburgh who were attending. The past year, the, we had some really amazing marketing endeavors that we haven't been able to do before. And I think in addressing the question of, "The chameleon festival is going to keep going no matter what." And I, you know, even if we aren't able to continue on that trajectory of getting more marketing dollars and pursuing the marketing, the chameleon festival is going to keep going. And we're going to keep, we're going to keep growing as much as we can. This $14,000 would help us to continue on that trajectory and to not lose momentum. That's kind of mainly, mainly what we're hoping for.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mr. Brian Stewart?
Brian Stewart likes him.
Too many moving parts, I apologize. In case anyone didn't get that many, it's Brian Stewart.
I can give you a shovel or a hammer.
First and foremost, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Hanlon for bringing this before the council. I'm certainly honored and grateful that he did so, that that means a lot. And for a man in his position to do that, that just, it goes a long way. And the comments of the council, thank you very much. Those that know me, this isn't my best forum, and I get emotional when I talk about the festival, but Mr. McKinney said it properly, and so did Mr. Hanlon. We are the chameleon city as of one of the milestones that the state legislature passed last year. No other city can say that in the state of Oregon. So that's a huge milestone. We have our own chameleon. Not named Brian Stewart, not named anything else. It's named City of Newburgh. I mean, you know, that pretty much solidifies what the chameleon festival is. And it is, thanks to the forefathers and sisters, the men's and women's garden club in 1949, it will always be our city flower. And if, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And when it, when you think about tourism and tying in with all the other entities, and for lack of a better word, putting butts in beds, it is a wonderful tool for that. And we have proven that. And we have the documentation, and with your help tonight, we can continue to accelerate and bring more and more people to discover our city. And that is their first reaction when they get here. Wow, who knew this existed here? And they mean that in such a positive note. But it's due to the chameleon festival and the diversity and the uniqueness of that festival that we are allowed to do that. But it's only with the support of the city and Visit Newburgh going forward that we will be able to do that. There's so many international groups and organizations that are involved with this, it's just really special. That's all I really have.
Questions or comments for Brian? Counselor Bacon?
I say this every time you're in front of us, because I stood in, I'll cry too. I stood in this room with you, watching your dream, and maybe 50 people showed up 10 years ago, and if anyone thinks that this $14,000 isn't worth investing in this, wasn't here when there was 25 people in this room. You know, it's, your heart and soul went into this, and you have done nothing but grow it and grow it and grow it. And as long as we support you and you are here, you will be forever the champion of this. You have done a phenomenal job. There is no, no festival, no event, nothing in this community that has grown the way your chameleon festival did. And I call it yours, it's ours.
Yeah, it is. Takes over 150 volunteers to put this on.
Yep.
It's our city.
You have never, I've never seen any, anything like it. And gaining, you know, national and international recognition in 10 years and growing from this little room to taking up the entire cultural center is amazing, and I will always support you.
The cultural district.
Thank you.
Cultural district, yes. The cultural district. I will always support you. I believe in you, I believe in the, in the festival, and you have done amazing, amazing work, you and all your volunteers.
Thank you, Dan.
Counselor Esson, Counselor Johnson?
So Brian, if you think we were down in Pasadena, would you be here supporting the Rose Fest, the Rose Parade? Because that's what I liken this to. If you go to Pasadena, you think about the Rose Parade. What I hope is, if you come to Newburgh, you think about the chameleon festival. And I think that the thought that you wouldn't support this program, it doesn't, I don't think you get it.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
I'm curious, how soon would you need the money?
Yesterday would have been good.
Okay.
If we can do, help us help you, the city. Our festival takes place April 13th. That's the shoulder season, which is wonderful and fits the criteria of what we're looking for. The sooner we can elevate that marketing, we have it all ready to go. We can pull the trigger tomorrow. But due to us being that early in the spring. That's what's unique about that, and kind of off-topic, but on-topic, when Visit Newburgh gets going. You should keep that in mind when they, when they do their funding for events that actually do take place in the shoulder season, to maybe hear their request in July or something. So, because you want to be marketing long before now, and you know, in terms of maybe when other ones do in spring or winter or something. But I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Joe, if you want to join us again?
Can we have one more?
Yes, we do. Shannon, I'm sorry. I had it buried. Come forward, please.
I thought maybe you were tired of hearing from me. Shannon Buckmaster, on behalf of Shalem Valley Chamber of Commerce, just to add some perspective and insight to the request by, on behalf of the chameleon festival, I brought this matter to the TLT committee. Joe, I appreciate you bringing it forward to the next step after Brian and Carissa approached me for our regular funding from the Chamber of Commerce. For at least two years that I could document, we've contributed $4,000 of our TLT funds to what they were able to supplement with a small grant through the TLT committee. So we're looking at a significant investment for the chameleon festival, 11,000 in 2016 and 12,000 in 2017, if memory serves me correctly. So the ask of $14,000 is appropriate to stay on trend with the combination of those two sources, those two TLT sources. That being said, I do caution against a reliance on a significant source of funding without sustainability or without some sort of backup plan. And then also the caution that what you would do for one organization, you would do for all. And I know that the chameleon festival has a distinct characteristic within our community calendar event, but it will open up questions from other festivals who would just as well like $14,000. I do support the chameleon festival continuing, I'm glad to hear the confidence that it will continue with or without this funding. I'm especially impressed with the stewardship, the passionate, professional, and proven leadership that both Brian and Carissa offer this festival. I think it would be money that would be well-spent, it would be in responsible hands. I would also, again, offer that I, I'm willing to consult in the continued absence of a tourism and marketing executive director for alternate sources of funding for the chameleon festival, going into the spring after they wrap up their 2019 festival and into the summer, so that they're building funding and sustainable practices throughout the continuing years. So even if we switch this to seed money to different practices for next year, I'd be willing to support that process. Again, much in part, not just to the community legacy, but also the leadership involved in the chameleon festival. I did encourage the chameleon festival to, or leadership team, to pursue alternate sources of funding for this active season. And with the conversation, regardless of who would have applied if we had an open grant, the chameleon festival leadership had consistently applied to the grant program, and they had the courage and proactivity to actually bring this before the council without guarantee of the request of approval. One question I might ask of the council and of the city is if there is a different budget category, so that you don't have the conflict of a seeming bias for one festival over another, but you could still offer funding to this particular element, because it is a hallmark of our culture as a community, is if we would consider a separate budget item for the city not related to TLT funding. I know we have the TLT money, it's there, but that opens up a whole nother can of worms. So if you're saying this is crucial to your culture, historical, it's late. Precedents, that might be an alternative that would be fair for other community members as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Counselor McKinney?
Shannon, are you guys supporting the chameleon festival this year? I was noticing that in the RCA, they, they have different organizations that were listed. Are you supporting the festival this year as a Chamber of Commerce?
I'm happy to support the festival in our marketing avenues and in volunteer recruitment. We are not supporting the chameleon festival financially. The funds that we had available to support festivals like the chameleon festival were frozen during this transition part, time where we're bringing on the executive director and Visit Newburgh. Beyond that TLT funding that we no longer have in our budget, the chamber's not in a position to fund any organization. And it crosses my mind, as the leader of a community-centered organization, what I do for one, I need to be prepared to do for all. And I simply don't have that capacity. So while we do support the chameleon festival, honestly, that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. If I can't put a dollar amount behind it, I'll put a voice behind it because I do believe in what they're trying to accomplish.
Anybody else? Thank you, appreciate it. And my apology for missing you. You've heard the presentation. Joe, you want to close it?
Mayor, if I can do it from here, very, very simple, that just, the recommendation is a motion that the city council authorized $14,000 in transient lodging tax funds to be used for marketing of the 2019 chameleon festival.
Counselor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council authorized $14,000 in transient lodging tax funds to be used for marketing of the 2019 chameleon festival.
Seconded. Ben seconded. McKinney?
Okay.
He's further away, that's why you didn't hear him first.
Oh, I heard both.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city to expend $14,000 of transient lodging tax funds to be used for the marketing of the 2019 chameleon festival, 2019. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Ess.
Counselor Johnson?
This one is really tough for me because I have Counselor McKinney's voice ringing in my head of unintended consequences. I, I find it hard to believe that if we advertised that we had $14,000 to give out as a TLT grant to an organization, that this would be the only one we'd get. And my issue isn't with the festival, my issue isn't with the folks in volunteering for the festival, or coordinating the festival, or the festival, or the chameleon, or any of that stuff. My issue is with process. And so internally, right-brain Pat, I think that's right, is saying, "No, we didn't go through a process, this is, this is bad." Left-brain Pat is going, "It's a chameleon, it's cool, it's on the board, it's awesome." And I honestly am very concerned about what message this sends. So what happens if another community organization comes to us and says, "Hey, we don't have any marketing dollars, give us some money." Are we prepared to start chopping away at some of the other TLT dollars to hand out and do a grant process that we had a process for that we stopped, that now we're just kind of willy-nilly doing it?
That's my word.
And I know, I stole it. See, you guys are in my head. I do want to say this, I think this says a lot about our city manager, that he cares enough about our community and about the events in our community to bring this forward and try to say, "Council, here's an opportunity, make the tough call." And I appreciate that, Joe, I really do. The part that I'm having a hard part with is the process. I mean, we spent all that time creating a grant process that we just kind of put over here, and now we're just kind of, well, let's just award it. So I honestly can tell you, I have no idea how I'm going to vote, but this one is, this one is very difficult.
Counselor Holman, Bacon and Esson.
Yeah, I guess I would just say that I, Shannon's closing statement is exactly my concern, is that I full-heartedly support the people that are presenting today and feel like a Scrooge. But I also feel really strongly that the chamber is tabling, is basically, you know, tabling their marketing funds right now and not willing to... But the chamber put forward money for the chameleon festival last year.
And the year before.
Can I?
And the year before.
So if I'm wrong, then, out of the TLT money, correct?
That money's been frozen.
But essentially, I feel like...
Are you asking this of staff, or are you making a comment?
Well, my understanding was that that's frozen because we are in transition to a new organization, which we just tabled.
No, no, no. Go ahead, you try to answer it, but...
Okay. They're, so, they can't give any money because that money is frozen. They have supported it in the past, but now because of the transition, they have to hold on to their money. They can't spend it on anybody. So it's not like, if they could spend it, they can't. They're, they're in transition to a different organization, so they can't spend the money. They have it, but they can't spend it, even if they want it.
So she's saying if she did have it, she would spend it?
The way we've done it in the past, yes. If, if they were continuing on the way that they had in the past, they've, they've supported the chameleon festival, yes.
Financially.
Financially, yes. But she can't now, because that money's frozen. Is it right? Yeah.
Follow on, Mr. Mayor.
Follow on. There's a difference between Shannon's money and the TLT. There's a difference between chamber money and the TLT money. And so on this, it, I mean, in the past, chamber supported their events, you guys supported your events through grants or whatever. The chameleon festival's money and grants that has been awarded predates anything that we've ever done with TLT. All right? They've been around for, for a much longer time than what TLT has been awarding money. It used to come to here, we would do it, just same way as festival would come here, we would either do it or we wouldn't do it. It's always, it's always been that way. But I guess if we're redeliberating this, if there's anybody in town that deserves the, the money to continue this upward trend that it's going here, is the chameleon festival. What best represents tourism and chameleon festival? Who brings in more money, you know, from, from everything else? Which other city in Oregon has a chameleon? All right? And, and it's, it's some of these other things. Patrick, I'm sorry that you heard me in your ear here, because what, how you represented me couldn't be clearly more to the contrary of unintended consequences that I've used in the past. You used my name, and nothing could be further than the truth in terms of unintended consequences here. And I'm trying to differentiate what we've done in the past with funds and how we awarded them, and how this is a perfectly legitimate request that's coming to us from Joe tonight. All right? It's not our fault that this, well, maybe it is our fault, that all this stuff is in limbo here. But in the meantime, what's more deserving of the opportunity to support something that really grows Newburgh well than the chameleon festival? I don't want to be in anybody's face here, but what, where are you guys coming from down there?
Do you have a follow-on? Do you have a follow-on? Follow on.
I misunderstood. I get, I do understand now that, the transition. So basically, so we're in an interim period before Visit Newburgh, or whatever, Visit Newburgh starts. My, my issue is still, though, which is probably not how I'm going to vote, everyone, just so we're all on the record, that I, you know, care about chameleas. But the, my issue is that this opens up, it does open up a policy question for other organizations that are, that in my opinion, as a citizen of Newburgh, represent Newburgh as well. And just because we're the chameleon city, we also represent other communities as well for marketing. So that is what I'm, that's all I was saying.
Follow on.
Is there a follow-on?
Yep.
All right.
The reason that I brought up the issue of Pasadena is so that I could put this issue of, that you're bringing up, in perspective. So if we're in Pasadena, and we want to support the Rose Parade, suppose there's some other Rose Parade that wants to come in and ask for the money. Why is that not, why is that not an issue for Pasadena? Because they've taken the position that that's who they are. They're the Rose Parade, they're the Rose City, they have the roses. We're the city of Newburgh, the chameleon city. So there's no question that that's who we're going to support. And we have a history of supporting it for the last 10 years. So I don't see the process issue, because the issue isn't whether or not another agency will come in. This is the agency, this is who we support, this is who we've supported in the past.
Counselor Bacon?
I agree with what you said, but I don't even think that matters. To me, what matters is that this is an organization that we have watched for 10 years go uphill while many other things have gone downhill. This is a good investment, they know what they're doing, they are always successful, they always grow. Chameleon, not chameleon, success. This is why, and chameleon. But if they were an unsuccessful chameleon festival, I would be voting no. But they are a successful festival that brings tourists to Newburgh. No one else we've ever seen can actually say that. The Old Fashioned Festival can't say that. The Truffle Festival can say it.
But they're not...
But they're not, but they're not the chameleon festival. And they're not local. It's not a local thing. So that's...
Counselor Holman?
Okay, I'm going to try this another way. So my issue is, has nothing to do with the chameleas. My issue has to do with, this process got frozen, and no one brought up the question as to grants that were done in the past, that were not submitted at the time yet, that would anticipate this situation from happening. That bothers me. And that is what McKinney was saying of unintended consequences, of freezing the chamber from releasing TLT funds towards a grant, to then come before this, in this interim period, maybe we didn't foresee it because it, you know, we didn't know if something was going to take as long as it has, probably. But I don't like these one-off situations coming before council that opens you up to other organizations, where then I'm going to have to say no, because I may not agree as, I may not like the new organization as much as I like chameleas.
Follow on.
Follow on, Counselor McKinney.
I want to say this, with all the love I have in my heart, is that the TLT committee doesn't set policy for the Newburgh City Council. We are the policy setter. The major, you know, where the buck stops is right here. How we've done business in the past, maybe that's not important to you, but it is precedent-setting for how some other people do here. And you're talking about a policy question, but maybe they, maybe they get their board, maybe they don't. Well, they do have a board now, but, you know, we don't have the next couple of weeks, you know, or, you'll have to figure that out, all right? But that, that's the one danger about this particular conversation we've got here, is that you, you are employing your energy and gobs of money, and if they end up setting policy that can't receive the support of the, of the city council, then, then we just ends up with just, you know, maybe some, some chaos here. But Chamber of Commerce... But Chamber of Commerce has received our assessment in the past, but they do not set policy for us. The TLT committee was formed by us, they exercise certain duties for us, but they don't establish policy for us. So we are the policy setters around here, and that's because we are the insured city fathers of Newburgh, maybe and city mothers now, from what I understand.
Excuse me there.
I know you have. I'm just deference, baby. So, I mean, it's this here, it's, I don't know why we're having this particular discussion here that is so grievous to me.
Call for the question? So are you going to motion? I don't even have a motion yet.
I think we do.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. You started the discussion. It's you again.
I can say something else if you want.
I said...
The motion is to approve the fourteen thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? I doubt it, but we'll try it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, seven to zero. Council business. The only thing I have is I want to remind those that are staying on the council and to carry on the message that there's going to be a city day at the Capitol hosted by LOC and OMA on January 24. So that's an all-day event, you might want to plan on attending. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. After a long, long journey this morning, the city manager and I and the city recorder signed the closing documents for the sale of the animal shelter. I thought that was the end of it, but then this afternoon, we had a little glitch with the surveyor, we're working through that, so it may be delayed another couple of days. But either tomorrow or the next day, the Newburgh Animal Shelter friends, folks, will sign closing documents, and then the title company will close shortly thereafter. So there's some good news, and I just wanted to report that to the council.
Commissioner Essing has two items.
Yes. I just, the first one's parting comments. When I was elected to the city council, I came on thinking I was pretty much up to speed on being a city councillor. But then I met Bob, and Bob taught me how wrong I was. His ability as a leader of the council kept me on my toes. His ability as a part authoritarian kept the council on task and helped us serve the citizens in an exemplary manner. Bob listened and took action to make sure that the entire council had their issues addressed. When I met with Joe Hannan with my concerns about emergency management program, Bob jumped in and made this one of his top priorities. In a future emergency, lives will be saved because of Bob's efforts with Joe and staff to set up a church-based emergency management program. When I expressed concern about the county transit program, Bob acted to put me on the Amhill County Transit Advisory Committee. Joe and the staff jumped in to make that something that's going to really be effective in Newburgh. And especially Jay Harris has been outstanding in that area. Let's see here, I jumped down in my notes. We will have a bus, we'll have not only a bus system, but we'll have bus stops, a fourth bus route, a transit center. This will not require a lot of city money, it will be funded by the state of Oregon's transportation funding. Imagine more service by using, let's see, where was I here? This thing likes to jump around. Anyway, imagine state money instead of using our own and having a great bus program. But that doesn't end there. Bob's leadership on the bypass has been outstanding. I followed his trip to Salem and worked with other agencies and other legislators to get money to complete the bypass. I'm not sure if we continue, we can continue his levels, with his level of support. However, Bob's outstanding effort should be acknowledged, and I was delighted to find out that he's going to continue to serve on the bypass committee tonight, because I was wondering about that. When I asked for meals we provided the council, Bob was the deciding vote to provide them, even though he was not sure that that was the way to go. His vote allowed me to complete my term as a councillor. I feel that supping together is important, and low blood sugar when making important decisions during a six-hour meeting have been addressed. I am thrilled with the new camellia cultivar. This is something I worked with staff to achieve, and they did a fabulous job. So that was my item one. My item two is I want to talk a little bit about, you guys got a memo, and I stated that the citizens of Newburgh should not pay for the system, that's the water system, the reuse system. Well, in that email I sent, there's a link where the newspaper wrote down exactly what we went through. I provided that for the council so that we won't go over the same plowed ground again, like we often do. So we discussed all these issues, and we decided all these issues. And with that, I want to say that's largely due to our staff. And I have learned that our city manager and our staff is the best. The amount of work that is completed is incredible, the dedication and professionalism is exemplary. I feel this way about the staff, but especially, I want to mention Sue Ryan, Don Karen Bevel. These two make sure every concern I've had is met, and Sue has kept me on the ball to make sure I'm meeting all the required tasks. And that's a big job. I should mention Jay Harris and Karen Hoffman. I know I may not be their favorite councillor, especially Karen, who I know has been taxed with a lot of extra work because I challenged her actions. But Jay and Karen should know that I was able to totally understand and appreciate what our engineering department is capable of, and how difficult it is for the public works to accomplish the millions of dollars of public works projects. I especially appreciate the tough decisions they made on roads and the reuse water program. I now agree with the decisions made on the reuse program. Jay Harris has done an outstanding job. Roads are being repaired and rebuilt, and reused water facilities that should not be built have not, and facilities that should not have been built have not been built. He stopped projects because they shouldn't have been done. So I'm, you know, that takes a tough decision. So I sent the article about the Newburgh graphic to the council and what the outcome of the review regarding our reuse program fees were. And this article made it clear that the city is responsible to pay for the reuse system. There is one customer for that water, expansion will cost millions of dollars, and lower reuse rates will reduce income to cities, to the city. I support keeping our one reuse water customer afloat, and also I support green lawns for parks in older parts of town. I see brown lawns where sporting fields should be green, low-cost housing lawns are brown. Yet we have plenty of water. If we had a flat rate for water, we could have green lawns in the city and still have the funding to support our infrastructure. As I understand, our current charges for reuse, if we gave Shaheilin Park everything they ask and reduced costs, they're bringing on another nine holes of golf. If they got that reducing, reduction in cost, their budget would have to go up thirty to fifty thousand dollars for the additional water to supply their next nine holes of golf. And that, when you say no right from the start, check my numbers, make sure I'm right, but I think you're, we're still going to come out money ahead, and we're going to have an additional nine holes of golf. So the biggest thing I've learned is to listen. I didn't listen, and I got beat up. And thanks, Joe, for saving the tree that was going to die anyway, and the wood's going to be, come out and do something good with at some point. And we got the road built, and, you know, I love my trees, I still think we should save 200-year-old trees if possible, and I still think that we need to maintain them so they don't fall in the storm that comes, that blows the big tree down and falls on your house. And I hope that that's being addressed at some point. But I just wanted to thank every one of you, and I didn't mention the police department and how they're saving our lives with the system that we only, we're only, the only city I know of that has a 911 center. But when that big earthquake comes, I think we're going to need it. So, I mean, there's a lot of tough decision you guys are going to have. I won't be here to mess you up too much, but that's the biggest thing I have to offer is listen to your staff. They really know their stuff. And I'm sorry I didn't support them more, but I really appreciate the experience and everything I've learned, and thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Sue?
Hello?
The only item I had was a reminder in the packet about Stan, and I'm going to screw up his name, Primizovic. There's a going away for him after the start of the new year, so...
That's on what, the 2nd of January?
I believe so, correct. So that was it.
How many plan on trying to be there? Good, good, myself, too.
Okay.
You brought up something I wanted to say thank you to Jay. I, somewhere, went all over the top of my head, I'm impressed with the lighting underneath the trestle at night on the sidewalks. I'm really impressed with that. Talk about creating a new safe zone in our city. I didn't realize that we had that in there, the lighting on the walkway.
Mayor Andrews, this is your public works director here. I didn't even know they even put lighting under there, so that wasn't me.
Well, let's see, who do I point to?
I got people.
It's not the city manager, it's not the city attorney.
But I do have one update for folks. At the maintenance division, this Wednesday at noon, there's a little potluck that he puts on, Russ does, and if you guys can show up for that, that would be great. And thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Is any other business to come before the council this evening? Thanks all for a busy evening, and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you guys next year. For one little period of time on the 7th of January, we'll see all of you.
All right.
We'll see all of you.
I'll still take your calls.
Yeah, thank you.
I get to bang this once more.